allegiance to reply in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening and welcome to our board meeting. Just for your notes behind you off to your right is an exit and off here as well. If I could, I'd like to take a roll call. Trustee Berenger?
Trustee Berenger's present.
Trustee Farrar?
Farrar, present.
Trustee Carl?
Carl, present.
Trustee O'Connor?
O'Connor, present.
Mayor Dwyer, thank you. Next order of business is the department reports. I need a motion to accept them as submitted by the department heads.
Berenger will make the motion.
Second?
Carl will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye. Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Thank you. Next order of business is the approval of the meeting minutes for the March 4th, 2025 board meeting as submitted by the clerk. Can I get a motion to accept?
Carl will make the motion.
Farrar, a second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business, the budget modifications as submitted by the treasurer. I need a motion to accept them as they were submitted.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Berenger will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Thank you. Next order of business, resignation. Officer Munoz from the Monroe Police Department, trustee Berenger?
Be it resolved, the Board of Trustees accepts the resignation of Police Officer Andres Munoz effective March 30th, 2025. The Board wishes Andres well in his future endeavors with the New York State Police, and I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Carl, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. All the best, Officer Munoz. Next order of business, the appointment of full-time police officer, Officer Bello, Padilla Bello.
Be it resolved, the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of Police Chief Guzman to hire Mario Padilla Bello, Campbell Hall, New York, to the position of full-time police officer. Mr. Padilla Bello is a New York City Police Officer. The required department application background, psychological, physical, and drug screening have been completed. The effective date of hire is March 19th, 2025, with a starting salary of $99,115 per year, and I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Farrar, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Hi, we'll see you. Thanks, congratulations.
Thank you, Chief.
Nice family. Okay, next order of business is the appointment of full-time laborer, the DPW, Mr. Jamadi. Resolve the Board approves the recommendation of working leader Aldo Chiapetta and appoints Peter Jamadi, Middletown, New York, to the position of full-time laborer. Effective date of hire is April 3rd, 2025, contingent upon the approval from the Orange County Department of Human Services Resources at the following schedule of rate pay rates and increases as per IBW contract effective April 3rd, 2025, $31.11 per hour at completion of six months, $32.11 per hour, and after one year, $33.11 per hour. I ask for a motion to accept this recommendation.
Carl, Carl will make the motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Thank you. Next order of business, resolve the Board of Trustees approves the appointment of Michael Zahra, Monroe, New York, 10950, to the position of seasonal laborer, contingent upon a preapproval from the Orange County Department of Human Services with an effective date of April 3rd, 2025, at $20 per hour. I need a motion to accept?
Berenger will make the motion.
Second?
Carl, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Thank you. Next order of business, the appointment of seasonal laborer, DPW Jay Nacco. Resolve the Board of Trustees approves the appointment of Joseph Nacco, Chester, New York, to the position of seasonal labor contingent upon preapproval from Orange County Department of Human Services Resources with an effective date of April 3rd, 2025, and an hourly rate of $20 per hour. I need a motion to accept this recommendation.
O'Connor will make the motion.
Second?
Carl, a second. Discussion?
Please.
Is he seasonal or is he full-time?
Seasonal.
All right, um, does he, as I'm looking, he's got a Jersey license?
He's supposed to send me the New York license. He, didn't I send him an email? I also spoke with him. I gave him my email. He has not sent it as of yet.
Okay.
Because my concern is the fact that looking at his report there that he's lived in New York for over a year, and he's got a New Jersey license, so.
So just curious, aside from running vehicles, I'm not sure what the issue is. You're saying out-of-state employee?
No, not an out-of-state employee. If you move into the state of New York, you've got a certain amount of time to get a New York license, do you not? Says he has it, but on his stuff here, it's a New Jersey license. As I asked the clerk this afternoon about that.
What is his address?
His address?
Is it listed here, right?
It's right here.
Chester, New York.
He's from Chester. I'm sorry. His address here says Two Evelyn Place, Chester.
He lived one year and two months in the town of Blooming Grove.
It says Chester, Two Evelyn Place.
So that, you know, that's just my year. If he's lived over a year in the town of Blooming Grove, he should have a New York license, should he not?
Yeah, listen, I'll defer to what you're saying. I don't have any issue with it. I just want to make sure it wasn't an out-of-state thing or something like that, yeah. So. Let's, let's do a resolution contingent upon not only the preapproval from Orange County Department of Human Resources, but him providing us with a New York State driver's license. Okay, call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business, trustee Carl?
Yep, resolve the Board of Trustees approves, resolve the Board of Trustees, resolve the Board of Trustees authorized Mayor Dwyer to sign the service contract for Monbasha Reservoir with Solitude Lake Management, 2844 Crusader Circle, Suite 405, Virginia Beach, Virginia, 123453, in a total amount of $14,964, $3,741 per month for a period of four months, beginning May 1, 2025, to August 31st, 2025. Be allocated from budget line F-83204330, Source Chemicals, and I'll put that in the motion.
Second, please.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Thank you. Next order of business, trustee Carl, invitation to bid Van Kuren Booster Pump Station.
Yep, resolve the Board of Trustees authorize a legal notice to be placed in the timeshare record advertising the Van Kuren Booster Pump Station project provided by Langton Tully Engineering and Surveying PC, Goshen, New York, with a bid opening scheduled for April 8th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. at Village Hall, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Berenger will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Thank you. Next order of business is to set the public hearing for the budget fiscal year 2025 to 2026. Resolve the Board of Trustees authorize a public hearing to be scheduled on April 1, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. on the proposed June 1, 2025, to May 31, 2026 tentative budget. I need a motion?
O'Connor will make the motion.
Second?
Carl, a second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business, Hudson Valley Waterworks Conference, trustee Carl?
Yep, resolve the Board of Trustees approve the attendance of Jamie Prince to the Hudson Valley Waterworks Conference held on April 10th, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Town of Walke Hill Golf Club, 40 Sands Road, Middletown, New York. The $75 cost will be allocated from budget line F-8330472, purification, education, water certificates, and 4.0 Department of Health contact hours will be awarded upon completion, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Can I get a second, please?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Thank you. Next order of business is Department of Public Works inventory surplus. Whereas state law requires equipment no longer needed by a municipality be sold at fair market value after declaring it, after declaring its surplus no longer needed. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of working leader Chiapetta and declares the following equipment surplus to the needs of the village and authorizes it to be auctioned through Auctions International to the highest bidder. Equipment to be auctioned is as follows: two older steel pack, backpack leaf blowers, two older steel weed whackers, two old steel pole saws, two old, excuse me, one old steel demo saw, large dump truck Salter Svensson, tractor roll bar, a DR brush walk-behind mower, a Kubota zero-turn mower, selling as is with all, for all, with no reserve. I need a motion to accept the recommendation of Chi, working leader Chiapetta.
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business is water department inventory surplus, water meters requested, disposed, and scrapped. Trustee Carl?
Yep, resolve the Board of Trustees declares the following water department non-working water meter surplus and of no value, and authorize its removal from the inventory to be scrapped. Would just, there's a total of 28 meters with serial numbers. Just make reference that the, that'll be on file with the village clerk what we're getting rid of, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Berenger will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Thank you. Next order of business, the event application for the Orange County Volunteer Fireman's Parade for September 27, 2025. Resolve the Board of Trustees approves the event application for the 110th Orange County Volunteer Fireman's Parade on Saturday, September 27, 2025, in the Village of Monroe, a salute to the dedicated volunteer firemen throughout Orange County. Approval is contingent upon certificate of liability insurance being filed with the clerk. Approval from the New York State DOT for use of any, excuse me, of New York State Route 17M, the appropriate tent permits from the billing department, and any outdoor cooking operation permits, all to be secured prior to the event. The police department, DPW, and billing department have signed off on the event. The parade route will be as follows: from Still Road to Route 17M, left on 17M, right onto Stage Road to Carpenter Place, and proceed to Lake Street. The parade will disband at the intersection of Mill Pond, Parkway, and Lake Street, at Paradisal Park on Mill Pond between Lake and Airplane Park. Parade participants will proceed to parade end located on Lake Street between the ponds. The award ceremony will take place in the grassy area between the ponds on Lake Street on the north side of the pond. Parade lineup will begin at 12 noon. The parade will begin at 2:00 p.m. and run to 6:00 p.m. I need a motion to accept the event application.
Berenger will make the motion?
Second?
Farrar, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business, the DPW equipment purchase Marshall Machinery for Kubota mower. Resolve the Board of Trustees approves the purchase of a ZD 1211 72-inch Kubota motor for Marshall Machinery off the New York State Contract PC number 69404 for the Department of Public Works in the amount of $18,312.72 allocated from budget line A 7110.2500 Parks Equipment. I need a motion to accept this?
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business, Orange County Stop DWI, trustee Berenger?
Be it resolved, the Board of Trustees approves an agreement with the County of Orange that authorizes the Village of Monroe Police Department to participate in the Stop DWI Traffic Safety Program for one year beginning March 10th, 2025, through January 1st, 2026. The first period from March 10th, 2025, through June 1st, 2025, for a total not to exceed $5,219. We will be notified of the allotted funds, hours for subsequent enforcement periods at a later date. It's further resolved, the Board of Trustees authorizes Mayor Dwyer to execute the agreement, the agreement on behalf of the Village of Monroe, and I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Carl, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Thank you. Next order of business, the introductory local law of 2025, Amendment to Chapter 200, Zoning, Definition of Family and Scheduling of Public Hearings. Be it resolved that an introductory local law titled Amendment to Chapter 200, Zoning, Definition of Family is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer before the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York, and be it further resolved that copies of the aforementioned proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the Board of Trustees, and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the Village Hall, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York, at 7:00 p.m. on April 1, 2025, and be it further resolved that the village clerk shall publish records to be published, a public notice in the official newspaper of the Village of Monroe no later than 10 days prior there, too. I need a motion to introduce this local law calendar?
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Aye, so carried. Thank you. Next order of business, the introductory local law of 2025, Amendment to Chapter 158, Rental Property and Scheduling of Public Hearings, Hearing. Be it resolved that an introductory local law entitled Amendment to Chapter 158, Rental Property is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer before the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York, and be it further resolved that copies of the aforementioned proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the Board of Trustees, and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the Village Hall, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York, at 7:00 p.m. on April 1, 2025, and be it further resolved that the village clerk shall publish records to be published, a public notice in the official newspaper of the Village of Monroe no later than five days prior there, too. I need a motion to schedule this public hearing?
Carl will make the motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Next order of business is the Niche Records Management System Conference. Trustee Berenger?
Niche Records Management System is hosting their 21st Annual Conference beginning Sunday, May 4th through Wednesday, May 7th. The conference will be held at the Hilton Denver City in Denver, Colorado. The Niche User Group Conference provides attendees with full access to workshops, panel discussions with industry leaders, and hands-on experience to delve deeper into specialized knowledge of the RMS system that our department has newly implemented beginning February 10th, 2025. The attendance of Detective Jeffrey Peyton has been requested by Orange County Emergency Services to the conference. In appreciation for Detective Peyton's presence to attend the Niche Conference, Orange County Emergency Services will fund the cost of the training and hotel expenses. The cost to the village will be approximately $500,000 for airfare. Resolve?
$500,000?
No, sorry, did I say $500 for airfare? Sorry. Resolve, the Board of Trustees approves the request of Chief Guzman and authorizes Detective Jeffrey Peyton to attend the Niche Records Management System Conference in Denver, Colorado, May 4th through May 7th, costing approximately $500 for airfare to be allocated from budget line 8.3120.4100 general expense, and I'd like to put this in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Farrar, a second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farrar, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Okay. I just have one thing I'd like to say publicly. So last Thursday, a week ago, my mom passed away. She was 94 years old and a vital member of this community since 1975. On behalf of my family, I want to thank my board for all their love and attention given to me and my family during this very difficult time. The village staff here at the Village of Monroe, our DPW and our police departments, it just, were just incredibly warm, friendly, and helpful across the board. And I want to thank the community Monroe that came out and supported us during this time. I want to thank you publicly. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I got. I'm, uh, trustee Berenger?
I don't have anything tonight. Thanks.
Okay, trustee Farrar?
Getting closer to that famous and that fantastic bill at Airplane Park. It's only a few more weeks away. We need volunteers, so please go to our website, sign up for it. We could use all the help we can get. A couple of things. One thing that's going to be added soon is around the smaller park, there's two pieces to it. There's an age group of very small to about five years old, and then six to 12. Around the smaller, younger age will be a picket fence, and on each one of those pickets, you could buy and customize it. A minimum amount of money to do so, so might be kind of nice to say that your children's children one day will say, my grandparents helped build this park by seeing their name. So hopefully you'll all come out and join us.
Thank you. Trustee Carl?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I know we talked last about the notifying the Public Service Commission on the streetlights and the double poles.
Have we done anything with that? Counselor? No. Okay.
Okay. Because I'd like to see that get moving, and I know actually two days after our last meeting, Orange and Rockham was replacing the light two houses down from me.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, we hadn't had the use of that light since December 22nd.
Sure.
And.
And I have requested, not to cut you off, I have requested a meeting to discuss credits because I do have 129 poles, lights, that have been in the, in the queue, if you will. And, and none of them have been addressed with any credits.
All right, because I think we're entitled to that.
Yeah.
So all right, good with that. Thank you. Garbage containers. Is there any way we can get with the town to see that when the garbage haulers come through, that they don't leave the garbage containers in the streets? Because the street sweeper's out now, and he's just zigzagging around garbage pails. If they could just get them off the road, it would make it a lot easier for everybody.
Sure.
Maybe we just send a letter to the town on that.
You can draft that up with me?
I attended the Work Committee of the Orange County Sewer District, upgrade and expansion that they're proposing, which I gave you folks all at our last meeting, which is estimated to be somewhere around $185 million. On Monday, March 24th, in the legislative chambers, will be a public hearing on that. I did give each of you a packet here today to take a look at. If anybody has any questions or concerns, jot them down. Mayor, I believe you're going to go up to that too as well? This way we can present those, we can present our, our concerns and questions to the, to the county. So that'll be Monday, 3:00 p.m., County Legislative Center, Monday, the 24th. And the last thing I have, parking out here in the back is becoming a premium, especially in the village employees lot. And there's a lot of vehicles that don't have the blue and white tags for our employees. So if we can start looking at finding out who they are and tell them not to park there.
Are you seeing it like dur, all hours of the day?
During the daytime. During the daytime, it's, have we ever heard anything more from One Stage Road, or is that?
No, not at all. Nothing.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Barron? Okay. Counsel, do you have anything? No. Okay, anyone from the public?
Good evening. I am here on behalf of the Monroe Free Library. I've come before this board on three separate occasions, and each time that I've left, I felt that this board doesn't truly understand how much this community values the library. Not only does the community value the library, but the community uses the library. So tonight, I'm going to share some evidence and also ask a follow-up question of this board. So please indulge me while I share some stats with you. In 2024, 107,000 items were borrowed from the Monroe Free Library. We offered 444 programs, which was an increase from 2023. 4,961 people attended our programs, which was an increase from the previous year. This community needed a space to gather, and we were there for them. Our meeting rooms were used 1,118 times. The community came to us for one-on-one support, which is a 30-minute session, and librarians met with the community one-on-one 552 times, which was an increase from the previous year. Just a minute about cost savings. Our community borrowed 82,000 books from our library this year, this past year, and a few times that buy a new hardcover book, which is about $15. That's $1.2 million, which is almost our entire operating budget. So the community is using and saving from using the library. Not only are they borrowing books, but they're borrowing DVDs, music, audiobooks, magazines, hotspots, laptops. They're coming to programs. They're coming to gather. They're coming to use the internet because yes, there are people in this community that don't have computers at home and don't have the internet and don't know how to use the internet. We are grateful for the community's support, and we will continue to maximize their tax dollars and the grants that we receive to offer them unique assets. And speaking of new unique assets, I'm here to follow up on my proposal that I came back in November regarding the story walk in Airplane Park. Since then, there has been little movement despite my efforts to connect with the mayor. So I'm here tonight to ask, who would be against promoting literacy when the average person only reads one book a year? Who would be against family time outside with no screens when the average kid spends six hours a day on a screen? Who would be against providing a free asset at no cost to the taxpayer or the village when there's a unique opportunity to provide something unique that this community doesn't have that can be enjoyed at least three seasons out of the year? So I'm here to follow up and ask, can we move this project forward? If not, I would like to then be able to put it to bed and use those grant funds for other unique opportunities that don't require our collaboration, although the library does want to collaborate with the village.
I don't want it in the Airplane Park.
Why not?
We have, the Airplane Park is a playground. It's for kids to be running around and enjoying themselves. That playground, that park has remained untouched for years and years and years. Now that we're upgrading it, a massive upgrade, you want to join in? There's a lot of parkland in this village, a lot of parkland, and there's so many places that you could place that. Crane Park is massive. We'll take, we'll take a section of Crane Park and give it to you to do that. But I don't want it in Airplane Park. I want it as strictly a children's playground. There's so many other places that they can go and read and relax. That's not there. That's a playground, an all-inclusive playground. So there's going to be children who really won't take any advantage of those things that you're going to be putting up. But the other children, again, is for a playground. I'm working very hard to build that park, and I want to see it as a playground for all the children, all-inclusive. And anybody, and if you want a section of Crane Park, let's sit and talk about that. If we, you want. If we, you want us to act on your behalf with Smithcove Park, I'd be more than happy to see if we can put something in Smithcove Park. But Airplane Park is to remain as a playground. So if you want to meet us halfway, we can sit and talk about that.
I, I fully support the library. I actually just took the survey that was in my email. I do utilize it. I, I'm a literacy teacher. I, I read, read to my children, well, don't really read to my children anymore, they're older, but I like the idea of the story walk. I, you know, I know we could talk about where it's going to be. I like the idea because I see that children are not read to and they don't read a lot, and I also support an expansion to the library. So I, I would like to work any way that we can to make things happen for the library because I do fully support it, and I don't want you to feel like I don't, I do, and I've said that in the past.
Thank you, I know, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Amanda, I too support the library, okay? And I think we've made strides toward continuing that relationship, I really do, including the structural, you know, realignment of the Smithfield parking area, the sidewalks, the crosswalk that now will be in play for the spring that allow you to safely walk across the street with markings onto the park, onto the pond side, which I think is a big thing. The Airplane Park is still a fluid piece, by the way, just aside from what trustee Farraro just said, we don't even have a grade yet on that property, and we're trying to get to a, to a date where we can start it, so we're not sure about that. But I think there is opportunity, I think in Crane Park, because there is a renovation plan for Crane Park, and that you may be interested in seeing that, that maybe we could.
I'd be more happy to show you what we're planning in Crane Park.
It's, it's actually pretty cool. And it doesn't even have to be on the Mill Pond side, or if you like it to be, I mean, I'm sure we can do that too, but on the other side, on the nine-eleven side, there's a path that we hope to bring, it's a lazy path coming down to the water's edge. I think having a, a meandering path like that with a walk might be pretty cool. But we do support the library, okay? Albeit at times where we have differences of opinions, it's structurally, I believe, intact, you know, our support for everything that you do, you know? So I want you to know that. But we haven't been able to actually, we thought we had, if I told you, for instance, that if you walked into the playground at Airplane Park and you looked in the left-hand top corner, and you just looked at the grass over there, and if I told you to look down at the airplane's concrete base, if I told you the difference in the grade was nine feet, would you believe me?
Probably not, no.
This is right there, that piece of wood, that's nine feet from that ground to there. It's just, it's hard to imagine, right? So there's a big challenge, we have to make sure we could fit this thing in this playground. So it's going to be a challenge, because now what has to happen is you have to cut the high site out, and that's where our walkway was initially, and we have to be ADA compliant. There's a few moving pieces in there. So I would like to get with you, and if trustee Farraro want to join us, we can go out to Crane Park and look at North Pond, South Pond. I think the South Pond is nice, at the nine-eleven side.
Yeah, I just want it to be safe for people to be able to view it, you know, I don't want it to be.
No, and that's what I think, if you, if you can just, you know what nine-eleven is?
Yes.
Okay, so if you go down to the left and down the hill.
Right.
All that is proposed to have a path there.
Okay.
And that path allows you to do anything.
Right.
Really, lazy, eight foot, ten foot wide, nice and easy. I think it'd be a lot of fun. This is a suggestion.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the library is open to collaborating, we want to collaborate with the village, you know, it's just, we have had no traction on this, and then I get everyone's busy, but you know, we're trying to be responsible with our grant funds and not just sit on them, so.
Well, we did make some movement, you, did you get the sign people involved?
Yeah, well, yes, I've done that already.
And we gave you the spec on the, if we want to keep that consistent, which is really important, right? Brings a beautiful park.
Right.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
All right.
No, we fully support your endeavors. Again, the Airplane Park is a major undertaking.
Right.
We've been more laser focused on that.
Right, I understand.
To get that going.
Yeah.
Now, just refresh my memory, you said it's picket fence?
No, it's posts.
What is it?
They're posts, like actual posts, like.
Points of interest.
That you have around, yeah.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
It may be lower because your children are reading it, right?
Right, they might be, yeah.
Yeah, but yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, you're talking about the old blacktop path that's, that's behind the monument? Redoing that, that might be an ideal spot for it, because again, you have parking along Lake Street on that side of the road, the other side you don't.
Right.
So you, you know, you parallel park right up to the curb, and there's got to be fifteen, twenty, fifteen, eighteen spots there.
Yeah.
So that, that might be the place.
Plus the Mill Pond Parkway, you just walk around to it.
Right.
So, and if you're at the library, cross the street at the crosswalk.
Right.
Get on there, come around.
All the way around, yeah.
Kids will do it.
Right.
It'd be fun.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
That might be, that might be the place to do that.
All right, well, the library looks forward to following up.
Would you want to do that? Are you looking to do that in concrete, or would you do that in paver stones, or?
Well, I think the paver stones are the coolest thing, but I guess we'd have to look at budget costs, you know, right now we're putting out to bid your side, just to see what kind of numbers we get back. We had designed the whole park, and that was done through a whole charrette of interest. People came in and talked about their wants, and the first leg of that is the Mill Pond side, a cross street from you, from Lake Street to the dam, and that has a whole project assigned to it, and we're going to be meeting with him Wednesday, tomorrow?
Wednesday.
Yeah.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, what time?
Nine a.m.
Nine a.m. So, so once that's done, then that's even another.
Okay.
So it all depends about budget, you know, maybe it's stamped concrete. I don't, I don't really know what, you know, asphalt is probably the least expensive of all the options, but it also doesn't wear as well as much, everything else, so, yeah.